We'll open the meeting now with the pledge of the flag led by Nikki Cummings.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Pastor Eddie Stiff will lead us in invocation.
Would you bow your heads? Father, we just thank you for this evening, God. I thank you for Dr. Cersei and the board, Father, and the leadership team that you have assembled to lead this generation into tomorrow with excellence and education. God, we continue to give you thanks for the safety, Father God, in the vision that you're giving these students, God, and Father God, these teachers who lead them, Father God, in educating them and giving them hope for tomorrow. Father, we just ask that you continue to lead, God, and direct our community. As Father, we are making a comeback and leading the students of today and setting the example for this state and this nation in excellence and education. Will you continue to bless the leadership, continue to bless our community, and continue to have your way? In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Okay, we'll start with the presentation. We're going to recognize the Miller Middle School and Crescent City High School soccer teams if you'll come up and you're representative.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We wanted to take the time to recognize our Miller Middle School girls soccer team. We had 10 games and they did a great job. They went undefeated. They were 10-0. Coach Daisy did a wonderful job and I'd like Coach Daisy to have a couple words.
My name's, I'm Coach Daisy. I'm not good at talking with a lot of crowd, but I'm really happy of my girls. We had at least four or five girls that never played before and improved a lot. Another thing that you didn't mention, we had no goals scored against us. So I'm really happy and I'm proud of my girls and I hope they do come back next year.
Did Felicia get a picture?
Felicia, I'm sure, did you get a picture?
Tim?
He might break the camera.
No, he won't. And now we'll have Crescent City High School soccer team.
Be patient as they make it all the way up to the stage.
We will. Take your time. The stars of the show. You tall ones can get in the back.
Yeah, don't stand in front of soul.
Or do like girls and do it sideways.
Well, good evening, everyone. Again, this is our, our boys soccer team from Crescent City High School. We're so very proud of them. They had a season of 16, 11, and 1, I believe it was. And they played schools well outside of their class meeting. We're a 2A school. They played schools that are 3A, 4A, so on and so forth. And we've made it this year, as a record, all the way to the regional finals. Knowing as a school of 567 students, we can have students who play against schools with 14, 1500 students. We're so very impressed with their ability this year as a team, sticking together through thick and thin, okay? So let me introduce head coach Jeff Leese. He's going to talk about his players, the captains, so on and so forth.
Yeah, I was just really proud of the way they improved throughout the year and stuck together in their sportsmanship, always showing class wherever we traveled, the good play. And like Dr. Shelby said, we competed against schools that had well over like 2,000 kids when we have 500. But I just wanted to mention the kids' names, starting off with our captains. We have Moises Consuelos, captain. Elias Agaray, captain. Hector Cruz, captain. He's not here right now. And we also have Alex Galvin, a senior. Emmanuel Dominguez, Juan Cruz, Saul Opreza, Rahilo Baltazar, Emmanuel Areola, Jesus Escobedo are all seniors. And then we have 11th graders Alex Ocampo, Enrique Espinoza, Hernan Rodriguez, Ivan Reynosa, Consuelos. And 10th graders, we have Christian Lopez, Alejo Cruz, Fernando Jimenez Cruz, and our freshmen, Med Perez and Roger Ocampo. And they, we, we had a couple goals scored against us. It's not like the middle school, but they did really well and I'm very proud of what they did.
Thanks, Dr. Shelby. Okay, we're at the public hearing part of our meeting and the first item is adoption of policy 5... Oh, yep, we sure do. Sorry, I'm jumping the gun. We've got a presentation before we do public hearing. Thank you for keeping me straight. Oh, sorry. Yes, 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 I am. I got rattled. Well, there's no one here to introduce. Right, but I'm just saying, I don't have any names here on my agenda. I'm sorry.
I can introduce myself. How about that? Good evening, everybody. Buenas noches a todos. My name is Lucia Valdivia. I'm here with the migrant education program and I need my glasses to see who's in the audience. I think some of my ESL students were going to come in. Are you here? No? Okay. Well, Daisy from our office is here and I see Mrs. Ramos here. Well, thank you, dear board. Thank you for having us. Our mission is very simple, is to, very much like the mission of the school board, to promote academic excellence as we empower families as their children's first teachers and bring them closer to economic self-sufficiency by providing educational resources and support services. And we are located next to the most beautiful campus on Putnam County, Miller Middle.
Don't worry, Lucy always tells me what to do, too.
And in our center here in Crescent City, we're located here because this is where most of our community is located. We receive funding from federal programs under Title 1 Part C, the migrant education program. Title 3, English language learners. Title 3, immigrant students. We have an interesting grant from the Department of Labor, the Farmworker Career Development Program, IMEBECAS. This is a grant from the government of Mexico to assist our community in receiving basic education services. And this year, we were able to bring back to the district the Yale Civics Grant to continue to provide ESL classes for our adult, our adult community. Go ahead, Daisy. And the friendly faces that you see there, we have two advocate recruiters in Palatka. We have a parent liaison house at Crescent City High School. We have five of us at Crescent City at the center. And our center basically serves as a one-stop center where the whole family can come and we're able to provide services for the whole family in whatever they may need. From childcare, childcare services to social services, tutoring, academic counseling, post-secondary, and vocational careers. So anything that the family may need, they're able to find assistance without leaving our office. We also have the adult ESL classes there from 6 to 8 and parental involvement activities as well as translation and support services. This is just some of the, in raw numbers, this is basically what we serve. You have, you can see, when I was looking at the numbers, I was really tired. I wonder why I was so tired. We see a lot of families. This is just month to month and of course it fluctuates, but this, and then this past month, we have been assisting with testing a lot also. So sometimes two of us go to different schools to assist with testing. Go ahead, Daisy. And I am not going to read this, but just for the board and whoever got the PowerPoint, this is basically the definition of who a migrant student is because there's still a myth about who a migrant student is. In Crescent City, we have a lot of people here who are no longer migrant because the eligibility is only three years after families have moved into the county. And if they don't make another move, then they are no longer migrant. Go ahead, Daisy. Then your English language learners, they may or may not be migrant. And these are people who may or may not be born in the U.S. and English is their second language. So they're learning English. And this is also a children born in, going to the, in our K-12 system. Go ahead, Daisy. Our immigrant students are children ages 3 to 21 who are born outside of the U.S. and who have been in the U.S. no more than three full academic years and not born in Puerto Rico, even though we have had an influx from children from Puerto Rico. Go ahead, Daisy. And our IMEBECAS is the special collaboration that we have with the government of Mexico. For the last 10 years, they have been giving us money to support our efforts in providing educational services in Putnam County. We have a very strong collaboration with them and they assist us in anything that we may need. Daisy? This is our English civics class. We have a lot of fun. This was when, the first week that we started, we happened to have a birthday and we celebrated singing "Happy Birthday" with our students. So this was just, the Yale Civics Class seeks to introduce our newcomers into the civic life of the U.S. so they can partake in all of the civic life. And our Farmworker Career Development Program, it is a program that we are able to help our students who graduate from high school and sometimes our students who have dropped out of high school who want to go into vocational school. And our grant pays for whatever tuition, tools, or training that they may not qualify for financially. So this is a very important grant for us to have. And go ahead, Daisy. And just last February 10th, we took a field trip on a Saturday morning to Jacksonville to the Apprenticeship Career Fair where we exposed our, some Crescent City High School students and some non-formal students to high-wage, high-demand careers in the building trades. Here, our students had firsthand opportunity to talk to the building trades people that review the applications and they were actually asking, how is it that I get to the top of that list if I submit my application? They were able to do hands-on training, welding simulations, and they also had a crane. So we were able to drive that crane, all of us. Go ahead, Daisy. And we did take one young lady from Crescent City High that said she wants to be a welder. I believe she's in the welding class, you know, so we're hoping that she will become one of our, one of our apprentices. But, you know, we do all of these things, but what is the real impact? If you see the little arrow there, the arrow, the red arrow is going to Betty. And Betty, when she was a little girl, she was a binaural student. She was one of those little girls that lived half of the year in Mexico and half of the year here. She was enrolled in the migrant program because her family was migrant. She was, of course, an ELL student. Then she became an honor student when she was in high school because bilingual people are, you know, smarter. And then she enrolled in the IMEBECAS program because, of course, she wanted to get her basic education credentials from her second country. And then after she finished, she went ahead and enrolled with us in the Farmworker Career Development Program because she wanted to become a nurse, which is a high demand, high wage career. And on December 2016, she became Nurse Betty. And now she works in our ERD land and she has been the happiest ever since. Betty is actually featured on our statewide magazine as one of the highest wage earners for our program. She started making $29 an hour when she left our program. You know, so that, that is, when you come down to what is it that the migrant program does, basically, this is what it does. And I have another lady here. She, she's a little shy in the corner. You're going to meet here Ms. Maribel Ramos. Daisy? Ms. Maribel Ramos? I'm going to embarrass her all the way. Ms. Maribel Ramos started with us as an ESL student. She was a parent of migrant students. And then, of course, she's a parent, then she enrolled in the Farmworker Career Development Program. And now, after getting her GED, she is a CNA. And right before she got her CNA, she also got her GED. So she did all of this throughout the collaboration that we're able to have in the same office without leaving Crescent City at all. So she became a great role model for her children. Congratulations. She has four children. And you were the first graduate, right? And she graduated before her children, so she made it.
Thank you for all and steel help.
Congratulations. So after meeting Ms. Maribel, meet some of our newest graduates. We have Jessica Lopez Quintana, a dental assistant. We have Carmen Salgado, an LPN, and Yanely Cruz, an LPN. And then we have some GED graduates and we have two in that picture. We have Stephanie Valdivia and Justa, I do not remember her last name, I think it's Diaz. But Stephanie was a former Putnam County School student and then she dropped out. Justa is an adult student and she just recently got her high school diploma. And we have Marlet Torres Procopio and Ivan Medina. All of this just happened this year. And of course, we also do classroom and community activities. We were invited to visit Middleton-Burney Elementary School to share some binaural heritage with our first graders, with Ms. Bratcher's class. And then I was invited to the Girls Can Event in Palatka that was about a couple of Fridays ago. It was very enlightening. And go ahead, Daisy. And in migrant education, we do believe that higher education is a family event. Our families and our parents do want our children to achieve higher academic standards and they do want, we do want our children to go to college or vocational schools. And we did a, we partnered with the ESL department and with Crescent City High. So we had the University of South Florida come over and talk to our parents and students and it was highly successful. We're going to continue that. And we also took our students on a road trip to Daytona State and they loved that. Right now, we're taking it easy. We're looking forward to the summer. Here, we have a picture with our, all of the summer exchange, the binaural exchange teachers that come to Florida. And we have one beautiful young lady dancing at the end of the year celebration. If you guys need more information, this is my contact information. And if you have any questions, I'm open for questions.
Have you won any international awards lately, Lucy?
Just from the council, yeah.
I don't think, I don't think people really realize how, how dynamic our program is down here and what Linda and you and your staff have put together and the lives that you've impacted.
Thank you.
And all of these successes are just wonderful.
Yeah, and I didn't tell you all of them. I'm trying to make a book. I started trying to make a book because it is just so much success and until you sit down and put it everything, put everything in writing. And Putnam County being so small, we're actually a highly recognized program because of the support that we have always enjoyed from the school board historically. I mean, I've been working here 20 some years and we have always had the support. So thanks to that support, we have been recognized nationally and internationally because of what we're able to do. And of course, we have a great community to be able to serve and do what we do.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Lucy. Okay, we'll move on to the public hearing part of our agenda. The first item is the adoption of policy number 5112.01 and bylaw number 0172 per Neola Updates 17-2 and 18-1.
Madam Chair, I'd like to bring them both up for discussion. The first one, I read several times. And I actually was thinking of Jane, you to read it because it just doesn't make sense to me and my papers are out of order, so I don't know.
Well, I read them, but it was a week ago, so I don't even remember what it was. 5112 point...
Oh, 51...
112.01.
Yes, it was, wasn't it? It says that the, we're not going to let them be in our schools if they can't graduate by the time they're 17 that year.
Well, they have to be, they can't, 18.
Well, now, the way this, the way, and I'm sure, you know, Neola did it, so they're going somehow by the law. This is what was confusing to me. It said that if they won't have enough credits to graduate by the time they're 19, they have to leave when they're 17. That's the way I understood it. Now, like I said, I read it four or five times and really was never quite sure that's what it was saying.
I think that's exactly what it says, but Jane, you would, you being the old-time, full-time guidance counselor, the problem is when you get a child that's 17 years old and there's no way that they're going to be able to complete by the time they reach that age, the state does force you to find an alternative method or else they're going to have to exit the public school. I don't like that, but there are kids that may turn 19 that are, they're just to cause problems, so Jane, I listen to you.
And so, what, I think what they're saying, too, is typically your 17-year senior year of high school. So if you start your senior, what should be your senior year of high school and you're, you know, lacking 10 or 12 credits, there's no way you're going to graduate by the time you were 18. But it said 19, you're saying.
There it is. Can I read it?
Absolutely.
In order to provide reasonable consistency of maturity levels among students in the regular high school program, no person shall be permitted to attend the regular high school program after attaining the age of 19 or after previously obtaining a high school diploma. Those who attain the age of 19 during the school year may complete that school year. Persons who are 17 years old or older and who, by earning the credits offered at the school per academic year, cannot meet graduation requirements, including GPA, prior to the end of the school year during which they attain the age of 19, shall not be permitted to attend the regular high school program beyond the end of the academic year in which they obtain the age of 17. So if they're still in 10th grade and they're 17 and it's not possible for them to graduate by the time they're 19, then they have to leave our schools.
Hopefully, they've been enrolled in credit recovery, trying to advance them beyond the academic day to catch up.
And the extra credit afforded by the seven-period day, that's also another way to get the extra credits, too.
We do have, we do have trip wires.
And we have the graduation coaches, too.
We do have trip wires to try to stop that.
That's right.
And they've done arrangements for students that are exceptional ed students. Those students can remain a little longer.
Okay, it just, every time I read it, it got a little more confusing. But reading it slowly out loud, that's next time.
Read it to Morris next time.
Yeah, really. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the adoption of policy number 5112.01.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Opposed? Now, is that including bylaw 0172?
No, bylaw 0172 is something different. And that one, I just wanted to point out, I think that perhaps in another school district, there must have been a problem with school board members going onto school campuses.
Yeah, because we've never had.
We haven't had a problem, but this is a new policy that we're going to approve now here if we approve this next one. That says an individual school board member may, on any day and at any time, at his or her pleasure, visit any school in the district. The board member must sign in and sign out at the school's main office and wear his or her board identification badge at all times while present on the school premises. The board, the school, or any other person or entity, including but not limited to the principal of the school, the superintendent, or any other board member, may not require the visiting board member to provide notice before visiting the school. The school may offer but may not require to escort or accompany the visiting board member during the visit. And that's pretty much it. I just wanted everybody to agree on that and everybody know and publicly say.
I mean, that's kind of what we've been doing anyway.
And out of courtesy, you may give them a call, but it's saying that you don't necessarily.
Have to. Because I've just talked to them a lot of times and just said, hey.
As a former principal, and I know Sandy was a principal, and she would concur that, I had several instances where new board members would come in and want to sit in on a disciplinary matter with a parent because a parent called in and it really created problems.
Sure.
And I had to ask in the, in the past, as a principal, does a board member, don't ever, please don't get involved in these situations because this is our purview and not really something that is at your level. And could have created a lot of problems. But this is, I'm like Kathy, something has happened.
Well, but also, I didn't read the last paragraph. Following a visit to the school, a board member may have suggestions and feedback regarding the visit. Recognizing that the superintendent directs the work of the staff, pursuant to Florida Statute 1001.51 and 1012.27, paragraph 7, the board member's feedback should be directed to the superintendent, who will then share it with his staff as appropriate.
Or the area directors, as you directed at the beginning.
Right, or his staff as appropriate, whichever he wants to do.
But you don't go directly to the principal.
Right, exactly. We refer people, when I get called some people, I tell them to go to chat. Have you talked to the teacher? Have you talked to the principal? You know, and then the area director.
It's the same principle we have now. If you have an issue, we ask that you talk to myself or my media staff and make us aware of it.
Yes, and a principal, I, any school, if a school board member comes on campus, it travels through the grapevine in less than three minutes. Everybody knows there's a school board member on campus and you're kind of like to them, the president walking around or... Most of them don't know you and they're nervous, so it's always better to check in at the front office and let them know you're on campus.
Well, I can't, I mean, we have to. We have to go through the raptor system. Right? Don't you, when you go to James Adon?
Not all the time.
Well, you're supposed to, Mr. Buckles.
I test them to see if they're watching. I take another watch up there. I go through the system pretty regularly.
We're supposed to all show our driver's licenses and run it through the system. Okay, a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve bylaw number 0172.
All in, all in favor?
Got a second?
Second?
Ms. Gilliard, I think, seconded the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. The next item is deletion of policy number 9210 and number 2252 per Neola Updates 7-2 and 8-1. and 18-1.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we delete policy number 9210 and policy number 2252.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number three, adoption of updates to policy 5111.01, 5120, 5121, 5517.01, 5540, 8600, 9211 per Neola update 17-2.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the adoption of the updates to the policies as you listed them.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. And number four, adoption of updates to policy 2111, 2431, 2520, 5200, 5610, 5780, 6550, 9150, 9270 per Neola update 18-1.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the updates to policies you listed with the exception of number 5200 for discussion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
All right, 5200 is on our attendance policy, and it was like the first, lots of pages were crossed out, and it's like almost a whole new thing. And there was a place where we should be picking, here it is, okay. Each, this is with regards to attendance. We may or may not check this box, and it's not checked the way it is. A student who is absent more than nine days without a semester, within a semester, or more than four days for schools on a block schedule, will not receive a passing grade for the semester unless, and then there's three things we can, we can check, one, two, or all, or none. Medical evidence is presented to the principal in writing justifying a specified number of days' absence. Absences are for approved school activities, or absences are approved by the principal or designee.
So, we didn't check any of them?
What's, what's the question?
Because it says one, two, or all.
Well, the question is, do we want?
Are you asking us to pick which ones?
No, nobody said anything, but if we don't check this, but if we don't check this, then.
Then it's not included. If you don't check it, it's not included.
It's not included, and then they have no way of getting a passing grade. At this least way, this way, they can get a passing grade.
I still think that the key here is that are approved by the principal or designee, and even if there's a check, a box, I think the principal has a right to be consulted, to intervene, and there's going to always be extenuating circumstances that we don't cover in school board policy, and that's why we're very flexible and we're, so we can rule against our policy. But I, I don't quite understand. Kathy, talk to me again about the box you're talking about.
See these three boxes? So, basically, this point, I know that when we have that occur, the principal looks at the data, looks at all the Skyward data, the notes, what's been turned in, and makes a, you know, whether or not.
Case by case.
Determination, yes. But if you read this.
You can do all, select one, two, or all.
Right, and this point, our policy, this new policy.
But we don't even have to check that box.
No, you don't.
Because there's somewhere else where we say.
Right.
Absences are not supposed to be reflected in the grade. If the kid, if the student knows the subject matter.
Right.
Even though they've had a lot of absences, they get the grade. That was some here.
Well, that's where it's, the student demonstrates mastery of the student performance standards in the course as identified in curriculum guides or adopted textbooks.
Right.
But that's not, those are.
It's almost like, it's almost like you can clip the absence, and, and because of their grades, if the principal decides.
If your absence is excused.
Yes, if the principal decides to excuse the absence.
And then they will, they may.
The wording is confusing.
Yes.
Right, the makeup for absences. Have reasonable balance of time to complete work, Miss.
For, for other, or other items not approved above that the principal so decides to approve.
At this point, Sharon, where you have written those three, one, two, or all, they're written in the policy, but they're not checked, so I guess it's a little clear.
These, these would be additions to your policy.
So, we would add all of those additions.
If you wanted all of those.
So, by not checking any, we're checking all of them.
It's saying they're all available.
Okay.
Right?
No, if we don't check that box before a student who is absent more than nine days within a semester, or more than four days for schools on a block schedule, will not receive a passing grade for the semester unless, then we're not saying that either.
God, so confusing.
Mr. Superintendent, have your instructional team got a recommendation on this?
I'd like to make a motion that we table this.
Sir?
I would say check all three boxes so they all apply.
Yeah, that's what I would do, but I, I'm not, I see Kathy's point at the same time.
But then below it, there's 12, you know, approved school activity, personal illness, correspondence, medical appointment. Is that something we could maybe table and then maybe get a little more clarification on?
Sure we could.
A principal still has, under Florida statutes, the right to approve an absence based on information that.
But what we're doing needs to be in our policy.
But they're going to look for school board policy, so it's consistent.
Yeah, it needs to be in our policy.
We want some consistency with this.
Right.
Debbie, do you want to say something?
Yes, ma'am, I would say I would leave them unchecked at this time because of our graduation initiative. We are working very hard with our students to help them to achieve their goal of graduation. I would want, would not want to see us box ourselves into something that may go against that. So, I think that's why those were left unchecked at this time, that we could always bring it back and advertise again if we felt we needed to change something.
All right, so it would, it would be to desire to do what Ms. Jorgensen said, to just table it and then let's see.
No, just not check those. No, we're going to, we're going to include it, and then if we need to address.
We can bring it up later if we.
Yeah, bring it up later.
We don't fill in any X's and we approve it as presented. That's a motion, yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Okay, at this point, I don't have any public comment cards, so we're going to move right along to our consent agenda.
Well, it's kind of new here, you think.
Well, I've announced it.
Okay, you know, there's a lady with a public comment card right here.
Do you need to see it first, Sharon?
You want me to read it to you?
This is Lisa DeVito. She will be speaking on the topic of school funding, especially in South Putnam.
Yes, hi, good evening. My family has lived in Crescent City since 1941, and I just became a full-time resident this summer. And I've just been very concerned at what I see about the level of funding for South Putnam schools. I have no idea what it is like in the rest of the county, so I don't know whether it's equitably distributed, or whether, as a very small county, Putnam is just suffering in that way. But I grew up in Florida, have lived in a number of counties in Florida, and in my secondary school time, I went half to private schools and half to public schools. And it is very distressing to me to see that in South Putnam, apparently, the capital funding needs are not even taken care of by the official school budget. It has come to my attention that a private club is being asked to provide a significant amount of the funding for the high school basketball gym floor, which I'm told is unusable without that. That is a capital expense. Never in all my years have I seen a private group asked to fund a gym floor. That was my experience when I attended private school, which, as I said, I did for six out of my 12 years. It seems like things have been flipped on their heads. And as well, my church helps support the bands here, as do other groups, and really, I think if it were not for the extraordinary efforts that I have seen from the staff, there would not be a band program. Because really, I, I think that they are greatly lacking in their access to usable instruments, from what I have seen. Although they do their best, and they're wonderful, and they go to competitions, they really have achieved quite a bit. So, I just am hoping that the school board is doing its best to communicate with our elected representatives, because what I see in this small county is very discouraging. And it is not really an advertisement, I think, for young families, that's what I'm told. And it's not really an advertisement for people to come here when you are coming to a place that apparently is getting the short end of the stick on school funding in addition to many other needs. So, and I was hoping that we would hear tonight about funding for school safety. I don't see that on the agenda. It was my understanding that small counties got more money in this year's budget for that, but the level of funding, I think, is, is of great concern. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Linda, before you sit down.
Lisa.
Lisa, excuse me, Ms. DeVito is what I should have said. We, I worked with a lobbyist a few years ago when I was a board legislative representative, and we picked up a million dollars to add a wing on to middle, middle, the old Crescent City Elementary School, which was, you know, it, we, we wound up putting a wing there so we could go back to a kindergarten through grade five situation instead of a K3 and then a 4, 5, and 6, and then having the junior, senior high, high school. And we did that, and we, we pick up, I know we, we put half a million dollars the board has in city water and sewage to run down, you know, all the way down Union Avenue from town to help houses add on and, and to fund, you know, to go to.
I'm not faulting you, I'm just saying I've lived in other counties in Florida that are larger and more wealthy, and they have funding problems too.
Right.
I'm just saying that it's been an eye-opener to be here full-time and to see the conditions and compare them. So, you know, I'm just encouraging you.
Okay, well, thank you.
I'm not faulting you because I know that the school funding is not an easy task, whatever county you live in. But I would say that as hard as Putnam tries, I, my suspicion is, is that small counties need more help. That is my suspicion.
We certainly do.
And.
You're 100% correct.
So, I am encouraging you to work on that and to get your citizens to work on that because the money doesn't come, you know, all, all by itself. But I, I'm not faulting you in the least, I'm just saying, I, I think that Putnam is struggling more than other places that I have seen, and that one reason is the formulas for, and they're very complex.
And not many people down this far south realize that we're in the middle of the cross Florida greenways that run through the other side of Palantca. And that the, the more populated, wealthier counties around us really don't want industry to come to Putnam County that help our property values go up, so that you'd, you'd have to have an interstate connector come through, and I saw Bill Pickens here a while ago, I'm sure he's all over that.
I'm not asking for an interstate connector, but I know there are funding formulas. I know there are funding formulas, I know there are small counties, and I'm just saying, Putnam, I think, needs help, and there's hopefully a place to get it a little bit.
Okay.
So, that was the extent of what I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Without asking for an interstate.
We'll try harder.
Thank you. Okay, now to the consent agenda. Ms. Gilliard, do you have anything you'd like to pull?
No, I'm satisfied.
All right, Ms. Jorgensen?
E2.
Ms. Cummings?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Buckles?
I'm good.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve consent agenda minus E2.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Madam Chair, what I'm asking to be included in the minutes is our request for a workshop on school safety. It didn't appear in the minutes, though we did indeed request one, and I would just like it reflected in the minutes before I approve the minutes. You agree?
I've asked several times in the past, and, and we had other pressing issues that I was kind of, we had to put it off, but I agree with you.
Yeah, well, I made a special request at the meeting.
At the meeting, so I'd like that on the record.
And it's not reflected.
That it should be in, it was under board member reports, and I understand that it would have been impossible to capture accurately those wrong speeches we each gave.
Right.
But during that, we did ask for board meeting, and I just, a workshop on safety, and I'd just like the minutes to reflect that. It's not that we're not trying to meet.
So, we're just.
I also, when I was looking at the minutes, there was a couple, during the public comments, I.
Yeah, tallied.
There was a tally, and I'm not sure, like, there was one, I know for sure was left blank that was in opposition, but I wasn't sure why.
Lou Freeman?
We, yeah, I wasn't sure if we needed to correct it that way, or who made those decisions to say, because there's a lot of left blank, and maybe.
Yeah, because Joe was too.
Did they write all of the actual cards they presented?
Oh, did they write that? Oh, okay.
What's that, yeah?
So, some wrote it and some didn't write it, okay. I was just, wasn't sure, I was just looking for clarification, how that works.
Yeah, that makes sense. That makes sense.
Okay, perfect, all right, that's great.
So, maybe the minutes you could put on there in support or opposition according to the card submitted to the board chair prior to public comment.
Okay, that would be good.
That would clarify it.
Anything else about the minutes? I'd like to make a motion, Madam Chairman, that we accept the school board meeting minutes for the March 16 regular meeting with the addition, with it to reflect the addition that the board requested a safety, workshop on safety, and also that the opinions expressed in the minutes came off the cards that the people who wished to spoke filled out.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Okay. We're going to go out of regular session into emergency session?
Madam Chair, can I begin, please?
Yes.
First of all, I think this is a mistake. We don't have a Putnam County school police anymore, do we?
Yes.
Yes.
We have a school police?
Yes. Assistant of Christie May.
Travis.
Travis is the police chief.
I think we never dissolved that, I believe that was part of the.
We've just never talked about it as being that.
Right.
I know that when I was superintendent, we put that in, and it would be very, I think it would be not in our best interest to have dissolved that.
Yeah, we've maintained that. We, we've lost some staff, but we still have the, the district police force.
The police force, okay, I didn't realize that.
And they drive those police cars?
And they monitor school cameras and parking lots and stuff.
I didn't really, so.
So, Travis, oh, I'm sorry, I just want to clarify, Travis is like the director of that.
Police chief.
Okay.
Okay, well, I have no problem with it then, I just didn't understand that we still had a police force in effect. So, I'm happy to make a motion to approve this item.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, Madam Chair, I'd like to go on. There was an item that I asked you to put on as an emergency item, and I believe you asked the secretary, the superintendent, to put it on, and it didn't get on. Why didn't it?
I was not given a reason.
Why didn't it get on?
Which item are you referring to?
It was the letter from Pasco County?
Yes.
Or Pinellas County, one of the P counties.
Pinellas, I think.
Yeah, and then we received another one from Duval County, but I didn't, I didn't request that just because I had not gotten a, for an answer on the, the other one.
Both counties of which you speak are some of those, as Ms. DeVito would have described, the more progressive, wealthier counties, and they have certainly bigger budgets for law enforcement and probably have their own police forces. I don't, I don't know that, but. I don't, I don't know that, but I assume you're talking about the.
Well, it wasn't to, to agree with it or oppose it. It was just to discuss it, to talk about it.
Oh, okay.
It's more of a policy.
As a, yeah, more of a policy on.
Yeah, we still haven't been able to talk to each other. You know, and I want to say something. I haven't formed an opinion on the STAR program. I have formed an opinion about the way this has been presented to the board, which it hasn't been. Presented at a, a national news conference. That's when we learned anything about this. And that's my gripe. Not putting schools and dogs, guns in schools, or putting, that hasn't been what I'm upset about. What I'm upset about is the way this was rolled out. And maybe if you watch it two or three times, and you listen to the words carefully, carefully, the superintendent said probably and most likely, and we weren't committed. But I think the general public got the opinion that this was happening immediately. Indeed, school personnel were calling me about it. So, my objection all along has been with the way this has been handled. The school board, by law, makes policy for the district. Nothing has changed that.
Let me, let me respond, go ahead and finish in our response.
Well, the only thing seven oh two six did was give the sheriff the ability, if he so desires, to do that. But it's still policy, and the school board decides policy.
Okay, I understand that. And I called each one of you the day before the press conference, and informed you, did not poll, but I informed you that we would have a press conference.
No. No, you did not.
No, you did not. You said you wanted us to know you'd been having talks with, with Dater. That's what you said. Then you texted us about the, the press conference the next morning.
Okay, I apologize. I did call you to inform you that we were working on a plan, and a plan is a proposal. Yeah, I understand at the time, this would be a, this would have to be a policy change. So, again, I did not decide anything, except we were developing a plan. A plan is something I would bring to you at some point in time.
That's what you told me.
Right. Now, since that time, there's been, the legislature's taken action on that.
And I asked.
Well, I would hope you'd bring the plan to us before you made a national television announcement. I would just think that's how the board and superintendent are supposed to work, that we shouldn't get a text to attend a national press conference, show up, and find out about the plan. And that's what happened. You know that's what happened.
Okay.
The fact that that wasn't on the agenda, I don't understand. When the, when the chairperson has to put something on the agenda, here is a bylaw? Here is a bylaw about agendas? The superintendent shall establish the agenda for school board meeting in consultation with the school board chairman. I can read the whole thing to you, but that right there means if she wants something on it, it should be on it. And it's, it wasn't on there.
Okay, one thing, one thing, one reason for that is the nature of what we're discussing is a sensitive matter, and it is on the executive session agenda for us to talk about today, as far as security.
What's on the agenda?
Security. If you look at your agenda, security is on the executive session agenda.
We can't have an executive session for security at this point, when we haven't decided what security we're going to be using.
Well, that's what the topic of discussion is, and if you'd like to talk about it, it's on the agenda during executive session.
Which means they have to all leave.
That is correct.
I will not talk about it out of the sunshine at this point. No, sir. I want to talk to my fellow board members about it first. How dare you imply that we should drag it out of the sunshine and talk behind closed doors? And, and, I'm sorry.
I just don't know how, when the chairman of the board, we, you're our secretary, and we ask you for a workshop, and it is ignored. That's unacceptable behavior.
And now we're supposed to go out of the sunshine instead and talk of having a workshop?
Instead, somebody decided executive session when every one of these board members has asked for a workshop and not, and been denied. That's not acceptable. And you can't choose to say, we're putting an executive without, when the board says we want a workshop.
Okay, we will, we will be glad to schedule a board workshop on safety. When would you allow that schedule?
We're gonna do that ourselves right now, I think, Mr. Superintendent, while we all have our coward decisions.
So, then for the executive session, we'll just do the bargaining portion and not?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Absolutely.
We don't have to, we don't have to discuss something the board doesn't feel comfortable with.
I'm not discussing that out of the sunshine yet, not yet.
I just want to clarify, Rick, that I just felt like my email should've been responded to. I, when I got the emergency item, you know, and I asked to have it put, because I knew it was too late to put it in the regular agenda. And so, when I asked for it to be in the emergency section, I never got another, another response. And so, when we got the emergency items through our email, and I read it, and it wasn't there, then I sent another email saying that it should've been on there, and then I still haven't received a reply. So, I, I guess I just felt like I, I was owed the courtesy of an email, or a written, or some kind of explanation of why you felt like we shouldn't have a school safety workshop.
Okay, I apologize, and if you'd like to schedule one, please do so.
Okay.
I, I even think if you went back and looked at the records, you would find it, and I'm not, he's, Rick's a, Rick's a big guy. He can handle any criticism he gets, but they, they told me several times that they would try to plan one in the spring, and I know it's spring turkey season, so that shouldn't, shouldn't be far off, so we're about.
Can we fit you in?
We're about on record here for that. So, uh, uh, I, I, I had no problem understanding the timing due to what happened at the Parkland School, and why this came, became an issue. So, I, I understand how it came up so fast and so quick and so rapidly. And it would be nice if the board could've met and talked about it first, but knowing that the legislature had something pending, and we needed to mesh our plans with what may come from the legislature, I'm sure that's now what we're gonna do with what's coming, so.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
We have them, Tiski, he's got his West Putnam area account.
Do you want to do it on a Monday?
Yeah.
We can't do it next week? Oh, spring Monday.
Spring was bright, it's next week, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Monday, April second.
Board members, would you look at April second, Monday, April second? Mr. Buckles, how does that sound to you?
Unless I've got a doctor's appointment, I don't have it on my, I don't have my phone right now. That time's good. Let's all plan where we're going.
You're not hunting?
No, not at, not at, not at seven o'clock.
Okay, I want to make sure the date's okay first. Um.
Ten?
Ten, two?
Ten's good.
If we're going to do this, I would like to, I, I think this is going, we're gonna need more people. We're gonna need deans, and to hear from them firsthand on what their perceptions are. The people that, with a rubber meat the road every day, and they're not sitting up here behind a dais, and they don't really know what's going on when, you know, the word's out that a kid's got a firearm at school, or there's a bomb threat, or, or the bomb in the bathroom. And, and I, I think we need to hear, try to find a time when Rick can.
If you can do that after school, it'd be helpful.
That'd be fine with me. And I would like, I sent, two weeks ago, I sent a list of questions in those emails that I sent, that I would really like answered, and I think that would be the appropriate time to do it. And it was about individual schools, and what they're doing, and what's, since the Parkland incident, if, if anything has changed, and what they've done to beef up security. Just easy questions to answer.
I had some clarification.
What time would you like the workshop scheduled?
Would four give everybody time to get there, or would you rather have it at five?
Why don't we, so do you, you schedule it?
Four or seven.
Four.
Four o'clock.
Okay.
One specific.
Principals, can y'all get here at four, five?
No.
Can you get here at five?
Well, the one thing that Charlie has a, a conference call that I'm very interested to hear about. So, he needs to be here, because he's got the one with.
Oh, can you be there April second?
Yes.
Oh, you can? At five thirty?
Yeah, sure, whenever. It's a pleasure of the board.
About the show at five thirty?
And please make sure Travis, Travis.
Because I'm more interested in what Charlie's, has, has got a conference call with the FS, uh, well, Attorney's Association, discussing the bill itself. And that's why I kept saying, I have a lot of questions, and I've emailed or told him, I want an answer to this, I want an answer to that, the Senate bill. There's a lot of details that haven't been discussed.
Will have great effect on what we do.
Correct. So, there's a lot of discussions that he's gonna have, hopefully, at nine AM, and then there'll be more to come after that. So, I feel like that would be imperative to hear those provisions.
Let's say five o'clock, board members. David?
Five.
Nikki?
Yep.
Kathy?
April second.
That's the week we come back.
Davy.
Is five okay with you?
Yes.
Five o'clock?
Five thirty, but I'll change it to five.
Five o'clock, Sharon? Okay, I'm just making sure, because we had talked about a lot of different.
And this will be advertised for the public.
It has to be.
Okay.
Yes, and please make it, please, when you advertise it, Sharon, am I, am I speaking for us all? I don't want to speak for us all, if it's not true, but isn't our intent that this workshop be to gather information and talk to each other, and this is not the time for public input? Just staff?
Right.
We've had public input.
I mean, you know, I guess if somebody had something really exciting.
Well, they can come to the school board meeting the next day and interlock in with public input, if they were there and wanted to say something. I just don't think, I think we love public input. It could be, go on to way past that time.
I mean, and we've had workshops in the past that are open to the public, so I'm not sure how our bylaws would read on that, because if there was.
I believe there is a bylaw that says that public comment is not required at every meeting, as long as it is.
Not required, but can it have?
As long as it's made available at another meeting.
Yeah, because we're gonna be together.
Mr. Buckles mentioned, there has been some public comment. If the board would like additional comment, it's certainly within the purview. But I can confirm that that's the, the language, I'm going from memory here, but I don't believe that there is a requirement for public comment at a workshop.
No, there isn't, just board meetings themselves.
I'll, I'll confirm that.
If you have, if you have a workshop, and you allow public comment, or just gathering the same comments, you, you know that you've got a group of people that don't want any guns in schools, even on armed law enforcement officers, and you've got a big group of people that want armed, trained people in schools, whether they be law, law enforcement officers, or they're trained designees. And that's not everybody, every teacher, and every custodian, or cafeteria worker having a gun on them. That's, that's, however, the state law and the new programs mesh out, and whatever this, majority of this board decides to do. So, that'll be, that'll be what we need to talk about. And I think as far as public input, we've all got the, the sniping on, on Facebook and everything that we've seen, where some like it, and some.
I just ignore it.
Think it's crazy, you know? But.
And that's not what this workshop's gonna be about. It's just to get some answers, you know?
That's what it will turn into if we make it a, you know, you'll have somebody pick up thirty-five kids from a center somewhere and bring them in.
Oh, no, no. I can be tough.
Well, I've, I've filled auditoriums, I understand, and, but.
But I would like as many principals to be there that can be there, you know? And if not, let them send.
Are they gonna go against it?
You need the people that, you need, you need the people that deal with discipline.
I need some answers, though, about what we're doing now.
Okay.
Well, then, that's what I was gonna say. I hope Travis is available and will come and give us a report as to what our current, right now, today, safety program looks like.
Okay.
And then it may vary from school to school.
And it may vary from school to school.
Because I know at Palatka High School, they've, you know, they, they're doing some things differently now, and, um.
I'd also like to know from, I would say, um, I guess John Chastain, as to which, if any, of our schools are totally fenced in. And I don't know if there's any way of getting even a rough, 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 rough estimate.
They would know pretty much, because we spent a fortune since the Columbine years ago.
Are we talking hundreds of thousands, or millions, or whatever? With that, I just want to explore options with you guys, because I have news. I have a lot of respect for each one of yours' opinion. I really do. You're all coming from different places, and I'm coming from my own, and I really do. I can't wait to talk to you guys about this.
And just something, you know, it probably may be cost prohibitive, but finding out the cost of the kind of doors that we have at the county office, where you have to be buzzed in, you know, what, what does that look like in cost? You know, just things like that, I mean. Okay, school safety workshop, Monday, April second, at five o'clock in the boardroom in Palatka. Okay.
And we'll be looking for staff to have a report. Travis should bring us a kind of off-the-cup report as to what our school safety program looks like now, at each school. And then if John Chastain, or whoever the superintendent designates, would bring us some idea of cost of fencing, if that's gonna be an option. And also, somebody needs to find out how much those doodly wop metal detectors cost. I mean, I would like to examine all options at this one workshop, because.
Could we just say to email our questions to Travis that we've gotten, and the ones you've already asked to be answered?
I think I sent those to Travis.
Send them all to me, and then I'll.
Okay.
Thomas, I sent mine to Rick and Travis, so.
I sent mine to Travis.
I'll try to find it and forward it to you.
And this applies, I, I see Sharon Spell over there. This would apply, as far as I'm concerned, to transportation as well.
Absolutely. We heard from that one.
I really have to, I, I really have a problem with some of the problems that her bus drivers will encounter in outlying areas, but I can tell you, you can, the wire, I've been through this before after the Columbine thing, and, and I can remember the people in neighborhoods complaining that schools look like penal institutions, because we put wire up and fences when it couldn't breathe through it. So, just, just, we just need to research this very carefully.
Sometimes you can't win for losing.
Nope.
But there are things that.
Things are different now.
Aren't gonna cost as much for the schools to already have in place. And I'm sure they've already begun doing some things differently at the various schools.
Also, our CFO, Ms. Rhonda Odom, will be able to tell us how much money we're getting, and it's all categorical, but at least what money we have for which categories, and how we'll be allowed to spend what we're getting. We'll find that out at the workshop, too. And that all makes a difference in our decision. Now, the funding that's come down for the sheriff's program, that's separate funding. That would go right to him. That has nothing to do with our funding.
He's not, that's not exactly accurate. All the funding comes through the same school's program. We don't get any. It comes to y'all.
Oh, really?
You're on track with us, and it comes to us.
The resource officers?
Yes.
Okay, this guardian program would is.
Resource officers through your school state.
That I know.
Yes.
And then the.
Any money for the resource officers.
Additional appropriation that will be coming to the school district, to be used exclusively for school safety. I don't know what that figure is. Dr. Surtsey may have some.
But that's not the, the dollar amount you quoted for the STAR program.
I would say it's an additional four or five hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
I've got it, Kate.
Sharon, do you have any water?
Let me get to the right one. I'm looking at my budget amendments right now that has all the cuts in FFP, so let me get to the new year's stuff. I've got that in the back. Our categorical amount for next year for school safety is seven hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. That's an increase of four hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars. So, that's how much extra flexi, extra dollars for school safety that we'll have. And it does say in there that it needs to be used for school resource officers. Well, let me back up. let me back up. When they, they increased the base, the base for school safety this year we're in is $62,550. They increased the baseline to $250,000, so everybody would start with that amount. Then based on our crime index, we got another $142,204. Based on our number of students, we got $75,930. And then we got a separate line item that says school resource officers. And every bit of that, $322,088, has to be used for school resource officers. So again, you know, the entire categorical is $792,220 and that's $493,000 more than we are currently receiving.
Do you, do you, do you have any idea if they've taken it from another part of your budget that you're gonna be?
I hope not.
They didn't take from another part of our budget, but they really didn't give us but 47 cents per student in flexible spending this year. Putnam overall received.
That's when I got it.
Yeah. Putnam overall received $1,299,235 more than we did, than we're currently getting. And Safe Schools is $493,000 of that. The mental health allocation, which we're still looking into, is $337,000 of that.
Good.
They take it, they take it out one hand and put it there.
Can that only be spent on mental health?
Yes. And then the flexible dollars that can be used to fund, whether it's the raises, the automatic raises for our instructional and classified that's built into the schedule or whatever we need it for, is a total of $487,000. So we do receive $487,000 more this year. But I will say that they decreased, they decreased our required local effort again. We're now under four meals, but our property values went up. So of that $487,000 of increased flexible funding for the district, the amount that came from local is $330,331. So the majority of the flexible spending that we have available to us this year came from local property taxes because of the increased value. People will see their millage rate go down for the school district, but because their property values went up, it still won't be considered a tax increase because.
It's a shift.
They went, yeah, they went with a rollback rate.
Always happened.
And what was that amount again for school resource officers?
For school resource officers? $322,088. That's a separate allocation. We're already spending more than that, but it does say that that particular dollar amount, there's no flexibility with that. It has to go for school resource officers.
And so Sheriff Deloitte, in order to, to train or to put another resource officer in a school, just a ballpark figure?
Sixty, round it off, I guess.
You got your sheets here that you sent us?
Rhonda has some of the same information that I have here, so I'll just go off of her notes. So essentially, if the board's will is to fully fund a youth resource deputy program and put a youth resource deputy at every school, which would include an additional 12 youth resource deputies, we're looking at an initial capital outlay of about $1.45 million. Or approximately, I'll give you an exact figure here, to fully equip a youth resource deputy for the first year is $110,731.11. Now, there's an annual recurring cost associated with that of $71,000, so you can back that out of the 110. And that's, those, those initial startup costs include the purchase of a vehicle, weapons, and all the equipment ancillary to that.
So right now with that additional funding, we're looking at anywhere between three and four additional officers.
Right. And then we have four more schools than that.
Right.
We currently have.
So if you want to have, like you said, an officer at every school, it's gonna take, the funding's gonna have to come from somewhere because of what we're getting from the state is not adequate.
Right. And we knew they wouldn't find it enough.
That's if you don't move Edge Academy because you're required to provide this youth resource deputy or an armed person to your charters as well. So if anybody's, that's another youth resource deputy that I didn't account for in those figures because I was not aware of a potential move of Edge Academy.
They don't have to pay for their own?
Because they have to cover.
They could, they could possibly figure out an agreement, but it would be, it would have to be with the board. And I don't know if the law would even allow it, even though they're on our school campus. But those are things that we're gonna have to work out. I just, I just know that the only logical way to do this is to try to find something like a common ground like we're going to discuss at the meeting that's coming up. And that is to find, we've got ex-deputies that are teachers that have been trained and work in law enforcement. We've got ex-military people that have been to war that are teaching. We've got people that could be trained and could be utilized, but that'll be something we're gonna have to discuss together. And we don't, you know, right now, I guess we're just looking at our agreement, which we need to pass and get together because we need to have something to work on. But then we can always rescind it if we don't like something in it or take it back to the table.
Gotta pass it to Reed it?
No, no, we just, this.
Multi-agency agreement?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, did we approve that?
That's already.
Yeah, that's like 15 minutes ago.
Okay. I just wanted, I didn't know why they were hanging around.
We've moved on.
I just know that, beating my head against the wall after all the years that I've, I've worried about kids getting killed at school and, and things that I've dealt with and employees being, having their lives threatened and, and some of the situation we've had where somebody kills somebody at school and they come to school and check out their kids and you don't, you just, the world has changed and it is dangerous and it's ridiculous that we have to talk about this because we've got a school district and schools across America are scared to paddle kid. Now we're talking about putting guns on kids. So it's, but it's something we've got to figure out. We're gonna work with you guys to do it because our law enforcement in Crescent City and Inalockin and all across the county and Palatka and you guys, we've got to work together and figure out how to keep our kids safer and our employees. I don't, I don't know what else they want from you, Gator. I mean, it's not, we didn't get enough money to add that many people.
Okay, we are going to go out of emergency session and back into regular session.
I think I'm just gonna stand here because I think I'm next.
Yes.
Yes.
Budget amendments.
Okay, this is the budget amendments. And as you say, go out of emergency, back into regular. I'm going out of next year, back into current situation. And these are the budget amendments for January of 2018. This is the one I think I may have talked to you briefly about, but it's the one where we get all the cuts or additions based on our FTE and based on different things that come out like McKay scholarships, the FTE audit, things along those lines. So for January, when we received our third FEFP funding, we were cut $861,733 in the general fund. I'm gonna give you the breakdown of that. I've got it all here and something different you'll see. I've done some color coding. You don't normally see all of that stuff, but I want to be able to explain different categories. We'll, we'll do the easy stuff first. We received a donation from Seminole Electric Pre-K for STEM. That was $550. We received donations for the backpack program and Feed the Need through payroll deductions, and that's $125. We received the charter school capital outlay that's transferred in to appropriate to the charter school, $7,357. Everything else in that category, in that top bracket of decrease in revenue came from the third calculation FEFP. We received a decrease in our advanced placement FTE of $4,687.11. We received an increase in industry certified FTE. These are add-on FTEs that we get added and they do a placeholder when they start the calculations for the year. They put last year's number in until they receive all the scores that qualify for the additional FTE and that hits in the third calc. So as mentioned, industry certified increased by $6,553.11. Increase in early graduation FTE, $417. An increase in ACE, which is the Cambridge Program add-on FTE, $53,842.19. We had a decrease in the virtual ed contribution, $1,094. A decrease in the reading grant categorical of $1,614. A decrease in the safe schools categorical of $496. We had the decrease in student transportation categorical of $281,128. And we had discussed the loss of students there at a couple of board meetings that we had. We knew that was coming. We had received an increase in instructional materials, that's textbooks and library media, of $6,991. We received a decrease in the digital classroom categorical, $1,092. A decrease in the SAI categorical of $22,889. We received an increase in the lowest 300 categorical. Again, they had put a placeholder in there because they didn't know which schools would be in the lowest 300. So we got an increase of $242,598. We received a decrease in discretionary lottery funds of $142,673. A decrease in class size categorical of $77,165. The McKay scholarships that were taken out to, this is when they took the McKay scholarships out and gave to the private entities. So that lowered our revenue of $361,572. That was money that was taken from us and given to the private entities. We had the prior year FTE transportation funding audit adjustment, $56,213. We were decreased by that. One positive in all of the third calculation FEFP, that we received an additional allocation. I guess they had some leftover dollars and they spread it based on FTE, so we received $12,290. And we received a decrease in district FEFP due to a decrease in our FTE, and that was $231,285. So an overall decrease of $861,733. A lot of it's in categoricals, but a lot of it had to hit the fund balance. But as you'll recall, I always do set asides. They're usually pretty close, so this is where my color coding comes in. Fund balance overall was decreased by $800,000. The rest of everything was absorbed into the different categoricals that were reduced. So I had set aside $350,000 for McKay. And it came in at $361,572. So I took the 350 that I had set aside and I needed $11,572 more. So I took it from the reserve for FEFP cuts that I had set aside.
I know.
For the prior FTE audit adjustment, they're like three or four years back, I set aside $50,000. They cut us $56,213. So I reduced the 50,000 and then I took the balance of $6,213 and those are in red. Those came from the reserve for FEFP cuts. And then also the other thing that I had set aside was in case we were short on FTE. Last year, we had a small increase, but this year we were down 101 students over what was projected. And we were only projecting at an increase of eight students over last year. There's projection wizards that we do. I go to Tallahassee and spend a day and we go through those wizards and try to, they, they work through it too and try to come up with the most accurate projection that we can. But I think what hit us a little hard is that the, the incoming kindergarten class was not near as large as the graduating senior class this year.
Ah.
Because we usually run, that's always the, we run the students through assuming everyone's moving up a grade level and everyone's graduating when they're supposed to. And then we look at the births in Putnam County for the five years prior. We try to estimate that, but that's where a big difference was. So we were down, like I said, 101 students. And I had only set aside $200,000 for that. So I had to take the additional $31,000 from that reserve for FEFP cuts. When all is said and done, I lowered all of our reserves to zero other than the 3%. And I've got that in green under, under notes down there. I took $170,000 for transportation's budget. I did an analysis of it, what I expected them to spend for the rest of the year. So I was able to pull some from their budgets. And the rest was covered by moving so that I didn't have to go into the 3% and that fund balance that we're proud of, we built this year. I looked at capital outlay expenditures in the general fund and I knew that they were allowable in the capital fund. So I did some charge backs and charged some things to some capital funds that were very old funds that were not part of John's five-year plan. So I, you know, spoke briefly with him. So we were able to do all of that. And what is now left in our fund balance reserves, we've still, of course, got the inventory figure. We've got the 3% mandated fund balance, which is $2.4 million. We've got the unreserved fund balance of $792,493. And then we've still got one more audit payback and that's from the best and brightest. DOE has still not given us, you know, the, and this is from two or three years ago because there hasn't been a finding in that since then. But those are the ones that we paid out that the auditor general's office said that they should not have been paid. So we're having to pay those funds back, but I've got the money set aside. So right now, fund balance is $3,784,953.94. So I think in all the years I've been doing this, this is the first time the general fund took a whole page. But there were a lot of cuts, a whole lot of cuts this time. In capital projects, we had an increase of revenue of $7,357 and that's, that's the charter school dollars. It all goes to them. In school food service, there was no change in revenue. They just made budget changes as needed within the different objects in the school food service funds. In special revenue, there was an increase of revenue of $51,867. $24,730 of that was for the district instructional leadership and faculty development grant. And $27,137 was for the adult education and family literacy grant. In the internal service funds, which is NIFEC, there was no change in revenue and they just made various changes as needed within the internal service funds and projects. And that concludes the budget amendments for January. Any questions?
I have something I'd like to say.
Okay.
Please don't ever retire. Please.
It's getting harder and harder to want to do this because they're making it so hard for us. You know, it really, if they were fund education, public education the way it needs to be.
Thank you for having the foresight to.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Thank you.
Have some reserves set aside.
Well, you don't become the president or the head of the school finance directors without being.
I know, and I'm glad she's ours.
Madam Chairman, I might like to make a motion that we accept the budget amendments for January 2018. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next is discussion and input on the instructional materials plan for science adoption.
Good evening.
Hey.
Thank you so much for looking this over. I'm speaking for Ms. France today. What is before you lays out our timeline. It's very similar to what we've had in the past. It does keep us in compliance with House Bill 7069 and the changes that happened there. But this is one of those pieces that keeps us in compliance. Just so you know, we did attend the NIFEC fair for textbooks in Gainesville back in the fall. That was well received. We took teachers from both the elementary level as well as the secondary level. We also then have had opportunities for teachers to come in and review the different pieces and to make a recommendation. The only ones that will become before you are those where we had teachers who actually reviewed and made a recommendation. Otherwise, we will stay with the current books that we have. So the only thing that will be brought before you are those where we had recommendations. Do you have any questions for me?
I don't. I'd like to make a motion that we approve.
It's not an action item.
No, it's not. It's just for.
Then we just advertise or whatever we're gonna do.
Right. We will bring the other pieces back to you at the appropriate time.
Every, how many years do we look at?
Every year there, there's a cycle. And this year is science, then we're going into math. So each time. Yes, ma'am?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So now it is time for our board reports. Mr. Buckles, I'm gonna start on your end this time.
I have enjoyed going on some school campuses and doing football games.
You're not checking in?
From Inalockin to Palatka. I haven't been down to Crescent City yet, but I've seen some of the kids playing up that way and some of the various activities. But I've enjoyed everything from baseball to archery to softball. It's, it's all good this time. You hear volleyball. I look at Holly out there and that's all I can think about. I bet she's never been to less than three million volleyball matches. Anyway, my concern is, is, is and has been not only that the governor doesn't take this funding that he's come up with and pull too much from our other endeavors because we're looking at a pretty good pile of money in our, in the superintendent and our board's request for appropriations this year. And I just would hate to see that diminished because of a knee-jerk reaction to what's happened in Parkland, which this is, should have been occurring all along. And I think the people that are in law enforcement and that are in schools with the kids every day, they know it's, it's tough. So anyway, that's, that kind of concludes. I look forward to the safety workshop meeting. I think we'll get some good things going. But that's it.
Ms. Cummings?
I wanted to reiterate the migrant awesome job that Lucy, they are amazing. They have impacted so many families, not just here, but east Palatka. And I'm just encouraged because I see changes and I see even my son's friends that, you know, we talk about college and the things that these kids never maybe thought about before in migrants. And they're, they're achieving their goals. So I appreciate all the hard work that's put into that, all of you all that work for the migrant department and just support it, you know, the volunteer work. And there's a lot of great opportunities to serve that, that great. So thank you again and all your staff and all your volunteers. So, thank you again, and all your staff and all your volunteers. I always see them. They know the families are in need. We got new families. We need food. Can you get them? And I'm like, yeah, absolutely. Let's, you know, load them up. And it's awesome to see so many people collaborate together to do that. Again, I want to reiterate the workshop, and there's a lot of good discussion, and there's a lot of good details that need to be worked out, that, again, I look to our attorney, because he is in the forefront of the law and the things that he's gonna be discussing with us when it relates to the law. And there's a lot of policy and procedure and details that, again, I'm looking forward to exploring. So, it's important that it's a detail-oriented conversation. And when it is time to have these conversations, when the plans are in action and moving to where it's time to do, I definitely would understand the significance of the confidentiality. So, but at this point, I'm just reiterating the workshop and looking for all the questions to be answered. I think that everybody has a lot of questions, and we all want to make sure we're doing what's in the best interest of our schools. So, that's a good thing. So, in a fair, all these hard workers out there, these kids, oh my gosh, they're awesome. So, keep up the good work. And teachers try to give them a little break when they're sleeping in first period, because it's hard. They are dedicated to those animals, and I appreciate all their hard work, because that is not an easy task. So, again, thanks to students and the sponsors who put in endless hours for that. So, that's all.
Ms. Jorgensen?
Okay. I'm so happy about the workshop. I can't even tell you. I've been so frustrated not being able to talk to you about this. Now, we'll be able to. Summer driver ed program, there's a Doris Slossberg fund, and I guess the county commissioner has applied from it and got it, and the money comes through them. But we'll have summer's driver ed again, thanks to that. Nine groups going in the district, three or four students per group. And I just think that's great. Again, collaboration, community county working with schools. When we have presentations in the future, I just watched Ms., our chair lady stumble a little bit. Could we put the name of the person that's gonna be presenting for whoever?
We didn't know correctly who was presenting.
Okay. Okay. And also, on the next discussion, agenda for discussion, input and possible action, we need to talk about school board committees. We have insurance, calendar, orientation, well, that's what I'm bringing up, orientation committee. We also, we thought we should orient new school board members.
And I've worked on that.
And I would like to start a committee, have you, whatever. But I'd like to not let that drop through the cracks. And also, I had written our attorney, and Linda from his firm replied about the fact that, as she reads the sunshine law, the sunshine law applies to any committee that is going to make, appointed by the board, that is going to make a recommendation to the board.
To be voted on? That's to be voted on? If it has, if there's no action on it, I mean, we can discuss it if we're not voting on it.
I don't know. I'd like that clarified. But the letter I got from Linda said that, she reviewed, I mean, sentence by sentence by sentence, and she agreed with me that the way the sunshine law is worded, if it's a board-appointed committee that's gonna go and bring back a recommendation, like the calendar committee and the insurance committee, they are subject to the sunshine law.
And that's something the legal department has worked with Sharon on as well, in the scheduling of those committees, and endeavoring to make sure that the proper notes are taken and records kept.
Kathy, could I add one thing while you're, so I don't forget? I just, I meant to ask the superintendent to look into the gym floor at Crescent City High School, because, you know, there have been nights when we've had hundreds of people sleeping in there with their families in hurricanes, and there ought to be some safe schools money that could be utilized to fix that. I know it probably wouldn't call for the wooden floor that you would need, but maybe there's a way that you can find that the board can help them some.
Well, actually, construction is starting on that Monday.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, we're replacing that for Monday.
But are we paying for it?
Well, it's being paid out of partially district funds, and the Rotary Club of Crescent City is also is raising money to assist in that. That's one of their main projects this year.
Well, that's pretty common. This Rotary is so active and so good down here.
Yeah. So, that starts Monday, is that right, Mr. Shelby?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to make sure the kids weren't having a sale cookies.
Yeah, that's.
Having a bake sale?
Yeah, yeah.
Trying to get it done before graduation, just in case we have to use that.
All right, Kathy, I'm done.
Okay. And so, I would like, on our next agenda for discussion, input and possible action, just so if we want to decide something, we can, just school board committees, discussion of school board committees, because I also think we may want to have an orientation committee.
Well, and I'll tell you this, I kind of took it upon myself, I guess I'm right now the orientation committee, and I've spoken to Sharon, and she's gonna work with me. But I've already, I've got a notebook of stuff already that I think would be important for new board members.
My orientation was.
Oh, I didn't get any either.
You've been there in ninety-four.
The only orientation I got was in Tampa.
Yeah.
And that really has nothing to do with our local board. So, you know, we felt like every time a new board member came on, it would be appropriate for, you know, not necessarily a mentor, but for us to sit down with that person or people and orient them to how things work on our board. So, I've started on it, and I'll get with you.
That's good.
Okay.
We can't be on the same committee out of the sunshine. We'd have to add.
Okay. Well, it's not a committee now. It's just people working.
Okay. And then, the last thing I'd like to say. Parkland, when the dust all settled, the school district did what they were supposed to do. They identified a dangerous student, and they expelled him. Unfortunately, law enforcement's hands were tied, local law enforcement's. When they get a call, there's a nut down the road with guns. I mean, so do they go take somebody's guns away, because Mrs. McGillicuddy said, there was no law in place for them to do anything. And now, there is. The seventy-two-six also addresses law enforcement's ability to follow up with these anonymous or reported reports, when somebody says, there's a nut job that lives behind me, and he's got all kinds of big guns, and he's talking about blowing up a plate, whatever. Law enforcement's hands aren't as tied as they were, and the FBI's hands aren't. I don't know the details, but there apparently is a waiting period until the person, it's a temporary removal of the guns, until the person is psychologically tested and deemed whether or not they can be given their guns back. But it is a mechanism that was not in place before Parkland. And that's what I wanted to say. I'm done. Thank you.
Ms. Gilliard?
Just three quick things. I'd like to commend all of our schools that participated in the pre-arranged walkout in commemoration of what happened at Parkland. I read in the paper where different schools took on different.
Activities.
Activities to kind of express themselves. Some wrote nice things about other classmates, et cetera. And immediately when I read it, I was reminded of the story where the teacher actually had every kid in the class to write something nice about a classmate. And one was killed in Vietnam, and he actually still had his list of the nice things that were said. Crescent City High saw them, and they formed the number seventeen for the number of lives that were lost. And I want to commend our superintendent and his staff for giving them permission, so that students will realize that we are working with them to help them, to try and make heads or tail of what is happening now in our society. So, that was great. I'm pleased, too, that we're now providing meetings such as this that will allow working parents the opportunity to come and be a part. Even though the school board meetings are our meetings, it allows youth the opportunity to come and to share and to hear the things that are happening. And the house was packed on the sixth of March, and as it is tonight. And it shows that you're very concerned about your children and the safety of our children, and not because they're not here. We're not saying that they aren't concerned, but it's an effort. And thumbs up to Palatka Daily News in their article. They gave the school board a thumbs up for taking the initiative to do this. And again, this was one of the promises that we made when we were campaigning, that we would make these meetings as many as possible, well, accommodating for those that have schedules that weren't about them. And so, with the safety, I mean, we're all in the same boat. We're working together to protect our children, along with the superintendent and the sheriff. And I just want to commend you that you were not just sitting by idle, you're thinking through some things, and you're trying to come up with something that will work to show our parents, our stakeholders, that we are concerned about our children. And in the end, we're gonna work it out.
Thank you, Ms. Gilliard. Before I give you my board report, I need to consult with my board members. I have asked to have the master board training changed from Wednesday, April fourth, to Thursday, April fifth, because I had a conflict. Is that okay with y'all? It fits Tina's schedule.
So, it's gonna be Thursday?
April fifth, from nine to one-thirty at federal programs.
I'll check with Sharon and get it straightened out.
Is she running your calendar now?
Sharon tells me what to do.
He needs to pay you to do that. Nine AM to one-thirty.
Okay.
You okay?
Yes, I'm good.
Cindy, you okay?
Yes, I'm fine.
Okay. And David, you'll check your.
What day did you say? What month? May?
April fifth. It's a Thursday.
I'm looking at going to the Archery Nationals in Kentucky.
Well, I may be going to that, too.
Okay, well, you can't go with me, because.
I don't want to.
What time, nine?
Nine o'clock.
My granddaughter's shooting in the Nationals.
She's our top shooter.
Yep.
Okay. And the second thing, we need to have a board workshop prior to April twenty-six concerning bus purchases. When is a good time to do that? When do you think?
Our meeting's on that Thursday, April twenty-six?
Well, that was on a note to get, for me to mention. So, April twenty-sixth is a Thursday. Our board meeting is the seventeenth.
Oh.
What kind of?
Can't we do it on the seventeenth?
Why do we need a workshop on purchasing just buses?
Will you explain, Thomas?
Mr. Boll, do you want to mention that?
Could we do it the seventeenth?
I know, we're talking about borrowing money to purchase buses.
Yeah, it's basically the same thing we did last time. It's a major purchase agreement, and Gary is the one who'll actually conduct the workshop. He wants to speak not only about the process, but the actual need.
And that's the guy we buy the buses from, right?
No.
No, that's the, Gary works in transportation. He's our lead mechanic.
He deals with them.
He lives on Neal Road out in.
I would suggest, if it's a good time for y'all, April seventeenth, the Tuesday, before, prior to our board meeting, we could do it at two o'clock.
That works for us.
I would feel comfortable if I had a recommendation from you guys about which ones.
Well, I'd have a question, Rhonda. Have we paid for the buses? We did this with?
During the finality of that.
Or we haven't paid them off?
No, we, this would get it started. We've got two payments left. The last payment will be made in July of twenty-eighteen, and that sets you up to be able to have another master purchase agreement for the five-year running total, with the first payment not being due until January of twenty-nineteen.
We make two payments annually?
We make two payments annually, so a total of.
Boll Park figure what the payments are?
Yes, about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year.
A year, so one-seventy-five.
We borrowed one point seven million dollars last time and got seventeen buses.
I know. We did seventeen buses, and it took five years, correct?
Right.
So.
And they were lucky last time in that we were able to use school impact money, and they were able to buy another seven on top of that. So, like.
That was awesome.
Yeah, almost five years ago, they had, they were able to get about twenty-four buses, but, you know, I'm not sure what all's gonna be in the workshop, but it is, the timing of it would be that if you so desired, you could go into another master purchase agreement. If you, in the workshop, if you approve us looking into it, what we would then do is go out for an RFP, get banks to give us a proposal on what they would lend. But it'll be all whatever you all, listening to the presentation, number of buses.
We're not going out for RFP on buses? We're just gonna?
No, we would have to.
Oh, we would have to on the buses themselves?
Once you have the workshop, if you say yes, this is something we're interested in looking into.
First, you look for the interest, and then the buses. Got it. Thank you.
This is at three-thirty.
Right. So, we're gonna have it at two. We're gonna have our workshop on buses, April seventeenth, at two PM.
That's a seven o'clock meeting.
Oh, okay.
Another seven?
And it's in Palatka. That's what threw me.
Yeah, there's two in Palatka and then one at each other end.
Are we having a superintendent's thing that night?
Yes, at six.
No, I think it's.
And it's on that same night, Felicia, April seventeenth, superintendent's council?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, we could do it at five. Yeah. How about four-thirty? Can you get there by four-thirty?
Yeah, but not everybody comes.
Then what are we gonna do during the kids' zone?
Five-thirty?
You can take part in it.
Really quick?
Not four board, five board members can.
Yeah, it's kind of, it restricts.
I mean, I always go to them, but I'm the only one, so, yeah.
I go to the west.
I know you do. I know you do. I know you do.
But not this one.
Well, Monday?
It's short, what, thirty, forty-five minutes?
How long's it gonna take?
I don't know what dates we're talking about, because I'm.
Thirty minutes.
I don't guess I could leave it.
You want to do a presentation during the meeting? That'd be too long.
It would be too long to present it during the board meeting?
It'll all be out of state bid, and it'll be a.
We can make it work.
It'll be a recommendation.
Why don't you do that?
Is that okay with you, superintendent?
We'll give you thirty minutes for presentation. How's that?
We'll make fifteen if we do it during the regular meeting.
That sounds even better.
That's even better.
Okay, so, X the work. X the workshop.
No workshop. Yeah, X that workshop.
X that workshop.
So, we have the seven o'clock regular meeting.
Right.
It's gonna be a presentation.
Presentation. Under presentations, yeah.
Okay. Just briefly, I want to reiterate what everyone said about the fair. Lot of hard work going on. We had quite a bit of disappointment, and friends and family today, when their hogs either weighed too much or didn't weigh enough, even though they'd given them cake batter and syrup and hot dogs and everything they could think of to get them fat, and it didn't work. But the hog show's tomorrow night at the fair in the Tilton Arena.
Yeah, the board policy prohibits cake batter and syrup to go to hog.
Well, we missed out on that one.
Okay, I'm kidding.
Tell Megan Morris.
That was a joke.
Okay. And then, they'll show the steers on Thursday night, and that's always such an exciting time, and the kids have worked so hard preparing for this, and it's just a fun event. And I also want to mention that I took place in the Hunger Fight event Saturday at Grace Fellowship Church. We packed forty-eight thousand meals, most of which are going to our schools for our kids that are in need, that are food deprived over the weekends. And if you ever get the opportunity to take part in that, you need to, because it's unbelievable how that, it just runs like clockwork. And then, the last thing I want to mention is that our next school board meeting is going to be Tuesday, April third, in Interlocken at Price Middle School, and that will be at is going to be Tuesday, April third, in Interlocken at Price Middle School, and that will be at seven o'clock. So we're getting, we're hitting every area of the county with our night meetings, hoping that we can get more parents and concerned citizens to come. So if y'all want to travel from Crescent City to Interlocken, we'd love to have you there. Board attorney?
All right, the legislature has spoken on seventy-twenty-six. The governor signed it into law, and now the question is how it is going to be implemented. And there are districts around the state who are in different camps about their view of the law. And tomorrow morning, I have a conference call with other school board attorneys in other districts along with the general counsel for the Florida School Board Association, Joy Frank, and together discuss in detail mechanics of the statute and what we can look for on administrative side on how the statute will be implemented. So I will have more to offer the board after that and work with you in any way. Any questions that you have? I've already heard from at least one board member on some specific questions. If you have any of those, please let me know, and our department will be glad to dig in and get answers to those.
Thank you, Charlie.
And our executive session, which we advertise as security, do I hear that we do not want to discuss security tonight? Because our sheriff's gonna be here, and I don't want to ask him, remain, if you do not want to discuss security in executive session.
The board attorney could tell you that, I think, if this could result in, in possible litigation that, you know, that we may be facing based on, and I think that's gonna come to every district that tries to do something at some point, that I think we could probably need an executive session on that, but it would be up to Charlie to, I guess, rule on that.
The sunshine law does provide an exception for meetings in the shade for security measures. And being that it is a security measure, my legal opinion is that it is a proper subject to be in the shade. It is the board's personal decision about the timing of when you want that to occur in relation to a workshop or an ultimate.
But you don't give us the legal opinion as to when the timing should occur, as to whether or not it should occur now before the board has had a chance to talk to each other as to whether a majority of the board even wants to go with that. And I'm not saying a majority doesn't want to go with that, but we don't have any idea now, do we? So what exactly are we talking about out of the public eye, away from the newspapers and the cameras? What is it that we could possibly be talking about today?
Well, that's, and you're not through. Go ahead and finish.
Well, that would, that would make that okay.
Because I don't even know what we were going to talk about.
And to me, if there is something that we need to know in, 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 in a closed session that could possibly save a child's life or an employee's life between this date and the date of the workshop, I think we need to at least hear it.
Well, it's too bad we didn't have a workshop instead of this scheduled.
It is, and.
Like we asked.
It is.
Yeah. We asked for a workshop, and what we're getting is a secret meeting with the sheriff.
Well, no, it's a, it's a legal meeting.
Well, I just need to know, do you want the sheriff here or not? Because I don't want to take his time if you don't want the sheriff here.
I guess we better not, Rick.
Okay. Sheriff, thank you for coming tonight, and I apologize for.
Is there anything else? Did you have anything else you wanted to say?
I was just gonna say that we had good news from the legislature. We actually, as opposed to our overall funding, we did receive an appropriation of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We requested five hundred thousand, but it was a matching appropriation for advanced manufacturing. So I do want to. We did avoid the governor's veto pen.
Thank goodness.
Anyway.
Didn't get what we asked for, but we got some.
Yeah, and a lot of people did not get funded. There was sixty-four million dollars worth of vetoes, so we, we were very fortunate to receive this. So that's gonna help improve our career and technical education initiative. And just want to give a shout out to GP. They helped with some of that matching funding.
That's wonderful.
To receive that, along with some of the money that we put up through our capital outlay money. So anyway, I want to thank the governor for not vetoing that, and that's gonna be a, you know, money well spent.
That's wonderful. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.